Good evening and welcome to our regular scheduled meeting of December seventeenth, our last one of two thousand and twenty-four. I apologize for the technical difficulties we had. As we gather today, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of this committee and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Ogonkun people. We would like to thank the Ogonkun people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. And please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now my mayor's address. To begin, I apologize for commenting two weeks ago in regards to the Truth and Reconciliation Day of September the thirtieth as a provincial holiday. The report I read was only after the first reading, and that's the part that I saw, and then there was a second reading which was defeated. So again, my apologies to anyone who may have been inconvenienced in any way. On December the tenth, I attended county council. Warden Emon was re-elected. As I told council previously, the structure of county meetings will change in the new year. There will be five standing committees with all seventeen councillors attending all meetings twice a month. The committees are Corporate Service, which includes Finance and Administration, Operations, Development Property and Health and Community Services. I was honored to be asked to sit as vice chair on the Corporate Service Committee along with Chair Jennifer Murphy. On December fourteenth, I attended the Killaloo Lions Christmas Parade. Thank you to the Lions Club for their efforts in coordinating this event and to all the people who participated. It was an outstanding afternoon, although cold. In regards to my request last meeting, I would like to have each councillor's comments regarding tax increases you are comfortable with to guide staff with their budget presentations. I know this is sort of early to do this, but you are in the public and you went through a lot of the comments from the public and just if you'd like to share any feedback at this time. Brian, we can start.
I'm scared with you, Brian.
You have no feel of anything? Carl?
Nothing at this point.
Kerry?
I don't have anything to base it on until we see the budget numbers.
Maureen?
Yeah, I feel the same way. I want all the information before I make a decision or statement.
Yep, perfect, okay. Thank you for giving me time, me this time, and best wishes to everyone for a safe and happy holiday season. Merry Christmas and all the best in the new year. And now I think Mr. Brown would like to say a word?
Yes, hi, I'm Mayor I Dussel. If I can make a quick spiel here. Last week, we lost one of our retired firefighters from Killaloo Hagerty and Richards, Roger Reed. He had twenty-nine years of service to our fire department, and it was greatly appreciated. He'll be missed. I do want to thank the KHR Fire Department, North of Wilmer Forest, and all the retired guys that came out and showed their respect on Sunday for Roger.
Well said. Thank you. Does anyone have any pecuniary financial interest? I haven't seen none. I don't believe there's any delegation. Motion for the minutes of the previous meeting.
Moved by Harold Levine, seconded by Ted Brown. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of December third, two thousand and twenty-four, open and closed sessions.
Any questions or discussion? Having seen none. All those in favor? Kerry? Now we'll move on to the meetings. I know Tammy has gone all the way to August, but if possible, could our hunters please disclose which weeks or which Tuesdays you'll be missing in October, November, so that when she's doing this, maybe we can make adjustments to the schedule to, for accommodations? If that would be possible?
Well, some of us hump the first weeks, some of us hump the second week.
Well, if we, if you can give us the date, maybe we can do something. And now we move on to the reports. Our fire chief.
Thanks, Dave. This will be short and sweet. Fire operations since the last meeting on November nineteenth. November twenty-third, we had a CO alarm on Annie Street. December first, we had a motor vehicle collision on Ronlake Road and Jack's Lake. And December eleventh, we had a CO alarm again on Annie Street. They've had a new building addition added in there, and they don't have the right ventilation. So they're looking into that now to correct the situation. Ongoing activities, weekly truck checks, monthly group checks. Recent events, November twenty-first, SCBA, that Self-Contain Reading Act for Addis Beach and some certification. November twenty-sixth, our bi-monthly meeting. November thirtieth, KHRF, the Firefighters Association Dance and Beef Drop. Over the last few years, we've been getting daily reports from the PRC, Provincial Emergency Operations Center. They stopped that this year. They all send out only on emergency fake scenarios. And we did get three in December, December second, third, and fifth, and that was for Environment and Climate Change Weather Briefing on snow blizzards that were coming in. December the fifth, we had the Renford County Fire Chiefs Association quarterly meeting. December the twelfth, the same group at Neganville for supper. December fourteenth was the Santa Claus Parade, as mentioned by Ted. December fifteenth was Roger Reed wake. December sixteenth, yesterday, brush burn at the Masque Road recycling yard. Recent training in this time is December third, we had size-up scenarios over all the tarps. December tenth, personal protective equipment, PPTs, SCBA, and NOCs. Upcoming training, you'll be page three. I won't be going through all of that, but that's the two thousand and twenty-five craft schedule for the thirty-five nights that we're flying Redcoper. And this EMC side, the only thing that's happening there is we did get it on December the tenth, propose amendments to modernize the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act. So now that Emergency Management Ontario is sitting on the wrong side of the OFM, they're trying to tighten up a lot of issues. So that's basically what I have.
Great. Does anyone have any questions, Carl?
I have people questioning the KHR Beef Drop.
Debbie Smith, no, Norm Smith, sorry, very big.
I didn't, I was in the dark, so I figured, say, who wants?
Give me a second, I'll give you a rundown of all the individuals. So we had Norm Smith for that, for the pigs, the half thing with Berant. It was Corinne Berant that got the pig. Reverend Deanie, she got the two hundred and fifty dollar prize, her prize. Let's see, it was Barbara Velatsky, or Barbara, I think she's married now, Bruski, and she got the hundred dollar gas card, and I never remember who got the fifty dollar card. It's out there. I told the guys that once things organized, should immediately post it on the Facebook site, but it should be more centralized area where they can, people can readily, you know, accept and enter that information and see what's going on.
Well, certainly you could tap into Colton, he could put on our page.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. I don't know if the Facebook page has been revitalized, but I've been noticing more things coming up, and it's really whoever's doing that, good job.
There we go.
I do have one thing, just to follow up on what Ted had mentioned, in regards to deceased firefighters. Do we have a wall of some sort?
Like a wall?
Like a wall, like a, I'm not, I don't want to use the phrase "wall of fame," but-
Wall of honor.
Wall of honor. Do we have such a thing in our-
We have not, not one. It would be a matter of getting people and be doing annual picture for the group or something. I don't know, but no, we have nothing like that at this time.
Because I certainly think, my opinion would be to commemorate the fallen, and they served us and our community. I think it would be a good gesture to have a wall to signify that, to show the history of our fire department.
And what would you expect to see on that, other than, let's say, an annual picture? Are we going to do individual pictures?
I would think an annual picture, yeah. Does anyone have any thoughts? Does it carry any weight? I don't know other fire departments if they have that.
I haven't heard of it. It's not a bad idea, but.
How far do you go back?
Yes.
Dad was fire chief, my dad was fire chief, I would tell you.
Well, if we can get pictures, we can put them up.
Oh my God.
It's just a thought. I thought it bounced off the room.
I lost pictures. What I'm seeing, what it does on there.
You know, one of the issues is even getting everybody there at one time, or one night. With the work schedules that some of us have, I don't see some of the three, forty monks in our infrastructure outside of the area. So I'm not sure how we could obtain that, that's something to consider.
Okay, maybe give some thought, and council, give some thought to it, see where it goes. Okay. Thank you. Colton, you're up.
Yeah, so I'm not going to have a short and sweet presentation here. We'll start off with the grants I applied to. So as per our last meeting, I applied for the Canada Summer Jobs Program, Celebrate Canada. That was the, I applied fifteen thousand for the fireworks, and we applied for the whole amount to cover the fireworks cost. Experience Ontario Grant, I applied for that. For those of you that don't know, the Experience Ontario Grant is just a funding stream that can help us offset the costs of Canada Day outside the fireworks cost. So all the other stuff, so Performers' Face Pay, et cetera, can pay fifty percent of that. Second item is the Killaloo Rink. So the rink's almost done. Dale informed me of just going on hinges and brackets for doors for flare boxes, and Dale's Whitney Hill here back from Wilmer on when that will be procured. Item three, tree piece, I thought it went really well. The lights worked great. Well excited to come splice them a couple days before, some of the bulbs were out, and you know, those light bulbs never once they break, you know, whole road breaks. They came in and fixed that, and then, yes, a big thanks to the library for all their hard work. I really enjoyed it and say for next year. Item five, so through Tammy, I got approval to enroll for the municipal administration program under AMCTO. Basically, that just teaches you all the fundamentals behind municipal administration, and that starts in January. So I guess, other than a notice that I will be away from December thirty-first to January eighth on holidays, I'm going to hand over to Maureen, or councillor Macmillan, sorry, and she's going to give you a bit of a spiel on our promotional videos through the RED program.
Yeah, so, so last year at the Roma Conference, so this kind of speaks to the importance of actually going to these conferences, we were sitting in on a meeting, and I heard about the RED grant, which is a rural economic development grant for small municipalities. The deadline was like two and after, so coming back, and we hustled together a grant application, and we were successful, and what that grant application included was fifty percent of the cost of getting our website ready done, and fifty percent of the cost of getting three promotional videos, which we kind of just threw in, you know, to make it more of a happier kind of grant application, you know, promote our township. We haven't really had any promo, good promo videos to kind of showcase the beauty of our area and highlight all the great things here. So Colton has been working on the website, that's going to come up in January, hopefully. He's been putting a lot of time and effort into that. In the meantime, over the course of the summer and the fall, we worked with a local videographer named Jack Albert, so I got him back from Willno, and we went around the township, we had a whole day together, where we golfed and fished and visited all of these great places in our community, and Jack worked his magic and he has three beautiful promotional videos, which we're going to showcase today. So, yeah, we'll get away with it. So we're going to do them one at a time, they're all about one, one minute long, and if you really want to get in luck, probably won't just study YouTube after, because I'm not sure if I'll translate on this screen, but.
Just off the highway, you'll find a small township with a big heart. Killaloo, Hagerty, and Richards is the kind of place where people come together to live, work, and grow, where outdoor adventure lies around every corner, where neighbors become friends, and communities come together to celebrate and play. The warmth of our township is felt in every interaction, from friendly faces to a relaxed pace of life. Killaloo, Hagerty, and Richards isn't just a place to live, it's a place to thrive. Discover the unique advantages of small-town life, because good things come in small townships.
So that is video number one, which is kind of an invitation to come, you know, to our community to kind of live, work, and grow. So video, we'll do this one next. This is kind of a more bougie video to kind of appeal to people to come and experience the natural beauty of our area.
Just, just for a council reference, that on YouTube, it does look a lot queer.
Yes.
The images in this clip are on here, like, it's pretty-
It's beautiful, it's great.
Yeah.
So that's video two, we wanted to appeal to city people, come visit this beautiful place with all these beautiful locations, like the park, like Boye Provincial Park, like Jack's Lake, you know, come here and relax and enjoy your time. And the third video is just a cute, it's kind of our township through the eyes of a kid. And we had a local, a local kid walk in there.
Hi, my name is Alex, and I'm eight years old. I love my school, my family, and my friends, but most of all, I love my life in a small town. From the playground... to Beaver Tales... to Killaloo Sunrise Plains Forest... to walking on the trail... to adventures on the water...
That's my dog.
to ice cream... to reading in the Big Red Tears at the park... to fishing on the lake... to a story walk... swimming on the bay... to roasting marshmallows by the campfire... life in a small town means every day is an adventure! Who knows? You might just like living in a small town too!
Very good.
So that's Alex, she lives, you might recognize her, she's Joey Sternowski's daughter. Yeah, so we tried, we really made an effort to include every part of our township. We really made an effort, like, we made an effort, the trail we're walking on is in Willno. We went around, like, we included the park, we made sure we kind of included and tried to highlight a little bit of everything in each of those videos. So hopefully those will go out into the world really soon on all of our social media channels, and we'll start really, you know, giving a push for people to come visit us. So, yeah, it's our first big foray, big step into act dev, I think.
I think they're friggin' awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I'm very proud of them.
Thank you, the RED program.
Yes, thank you RED program, and thank you Colton for, yeah, and even the summer student worked with us on, like, coming up with ideas, so it was a lot of, there are a lot of heads involved in this, but, yeah, I'm very proud of what came out of it. And we can't wait to show you the website. Yeah, it's beautiful. It's coming. Our New Year gift to you, we only gave you a few gifts at the time.
So the first meeting in January, we'll get to view that?
Well, maybe the second. We'll see how it goes. It's getting there.
There's really, other than, like, implementing kind of new information and kind of sprucing it up, like, everything's in there that has to be in there now, it's just a matter of making it-
Pretty.
Yeah.
So these three videos, how can we, can we blend them together to, into a package that we shoot out to people?
I don't think we want to blend them together into a package. I see them going up on our YouTube channel, our page, our YouTube channel, maybe we're-
I see it as well.
Yeah, maybe we're boosting them on Facebook, you know, putting them on Instagram. I just see them being shared. So if you see the videos come up and you're on social media, share them. Like, that's all I can do, I encourage everyone to share them, share them, share them. Let's make sure as many people as possible see them. Yeah, that's really the best way. Like, now we actually have something really cool to promote our township with. And the videos is like little cassette on the screen, they're not quite as vibrant as they are. They're, like, stunning. This young Jack did a phenomenal job for us, phenomenal. So I'm so impressed with, with his work, yeah.
Well, that's a good report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any questions? I mean, I know that video kind of told of any questions you might have, but.
You can stay for snack now. Everything was good?
Yeah, it was great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy?
Okay, so I really don't have a report, all I have is just sort of an ask of council, so it's in relation to the Canada Post Strike. So as you're aware, the Canada Post Strike has resulted in significant delays in mail delivery, affecting many residents' ability to receive their utility bills on time, which are due December thirty-first. This has created undue hardship for those who have not yet received their bills as they were just mailed this week. So in light of these circumstances, I'm asking that council consider waiving the penalty and interest charges for the month of January to ensure that residents are not unfairly penalized for factors beyond their control. And if council's okay with that, then I have prepared a resolution to follow suit with that.
Does anyone have any questions?
I paid mine.
So let's hear the resolution.
So moved by Harold Levine, seconded by Ted Brown. Whereas, council for the corporation of the township of Killaloo Hagerty and Richards acknowledges that the Canada Post Strike has resulted in significant delays in mail delivery, impacting many residents' ability to receive their utility bills on time, and whereas this situation has created undue hardship for residents who have not yet received their bills, now therefore be it resolved that council agrees to waive the penalty and interest charges for the month of January to ensure that residents are not unfairly penalized due to circumstances beyond their control. Be it further resolved that staff be directed to implement this decision and communicate the temporary waiver to the affected residents.
All those in favor? Kerry?
And that's all I have.
Okay, good. Examining the accounts. Road and General Voucher eleven dash twenty-two. Questions? Oh, just start off with Brian.
Two six eight three seven. Is that the road code?
Eight three seven?
Yeah. Two six eight three seven. And the one right below it, two six eight three eight.
Is that the, on the back page? Is that the water treatment? Like a scatter? Hundred and twenty-four five?
Sounds like the scatter.
I think it's the water treatment point.
Yeah, it's the scatter.
Brian? Who's for the scatter, the water treatment point?
Water treatment, okay, and final one is two six eight five three.
Winter sand, greater rental.
Old sand, okay. Okay, thank you.
Carl?
Well, nothing.
Wow. Okay. Anybody have anything for committees? Nothing? Correspondence? As I mentioned before, okay, this one is the Letter to Minister Sarkaria.
This is a good letter.
Next one is from the town of-
I have a question. So on the back, part of that, you have things listed, was any of them a held move for the day you get into those meetings?
I don't know that. I don't know that. That was, it was like it was Peter's letter to the minister, so I don't know how-
So who from county would be going to that? It would be just an ordinary, maybe the board?
And maybe the CO clerk.
Because already three of those dates are passed, so I just wondered if any of them-
Yeah, well, this was done December fourth, so the letter was December fourth, so. The next one is the Town of Deep River, requested to province to amend the Blue Box regulation.
Favour resolution.
Resolution?
Moved by Carl Keogh, seconded by Brian Pukowski. The council for the township of Killaloo Hagerty and Richards hereby supports the resolution received from the Town of Deep River regarding Ontario Regulation three ninety-one slash twenty-one, Blue Box, which was passed at their November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting as attached. And further that this resolution be forwarded to the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, MP John Yakubuski, and to all municipalities in Ontario for their endorsement and advocacy.
All those in favor? Kerry? And number C, municipality of East Ferris, resolution from the Northern Ontario Women's Caucus. Next one is from the township of Madawaska Valley. The next one is the Town of Deep River, Requested to Province to amend the Blue Box Regulation.
Favor resolution.
Resolution?
Moved by Carl Keos, second by Brian Kapowski. The Council for the Township of Killaloo, Hagerty and Richards hereby supports the resolution received from the Town of Deep River regarding Ontario Regulation three ninety-one slash twenty-one, Blue Box, which was passed at their November twentieth, twenty twenty-four meeting as attached. And further that this resolution be forwarded to the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, MP John Yakubuski, and to all municipalities in Ontario for their endorsement and advocacy.
All those in favor? Carrie? And number C, Municipality of East Ferris, Resolution from the Northern Ontario Women's Caucus. Next one is from the Township of Madawaska Valley.
I just want to comment on just what a great remodel that is. Yes. Yeah, it was fantastic.
Was there any feedback, Tammy, from Dean's meeting with them?
They discussed it, but they're still
We did send the letter also.
We haven't yet. We will be. Dean wanted to wait until after the meeting? But Dean did voice the opinions of himself and council at that meeting.
Next one's from the County of Renfrew. As I mentioned, Dean Emon was re-elected.
Re-adulation, so more than even.
And F, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, proposed municipal accountability. And at this, and at this time, speaking of time, I would like to have a brief recess and for refreshments and we will resume at eight o'clock.